Walter, I think you've got something you want to talk about.
Yes, we discussed several, Mr. Walter and I discussed several items that we're going to look at it. And the one that stayed with us was the minimum side yard setback. And the current code says that there shall be no minimum side yard setback unless adjacent to a residential district, in which case the side yard setback shall be 15. And we discussed back and forth a lot of this issue. And we wanted 45 to 35 feet to be more common with the other ones. We had gone back and forth, we made notes from all the different R1s. So we had, we're increasing the height of the building here. And we, the building, under the current code, a building as tall as 44 feet high can be placed right next to a residential building. This does not provide enough buffers for the residential area. Now, we have discussed the back side as well. And we, we were content with the fact that there is enough safeguards for the back, for the backyard, for the setback. Well, we had found out that the provision where it says, well, we have to have the parking on the rear, we have to have a line of trees and so forth. So it was going to be a little bit more of room on the back, not on top of something else. But the side by the vote was a lot for the 10 feet. And although originally I proposed 50, I settled with the 35 because that was the norm when we checked on the different residencies and so forth. Mr. Walter, do you want to add anything on that?
Yeah, well, the thing, quite the way, we originally started with the side of the back thinking that, you know, next to the whole center, the potential on paper was for somebody to have a 44-foot building, 20 feet from her house, with two 10-foot setbacks, which would be very disruptive and affect the property values. So, and a lot, let's know that the back setback was really not much of an issue because it required the parking lot to be behind the building and also it requires landscaping and a row of trees 12 feet apart and then all this and 4 feet apart, I forget what it was.
All the road, the trees, yeah.
Pretty good buffer. So we didn't really have that invasiveness of a probability. But on the side setback, it still spreads 10-foot clearance and you build up to a 40-foot, 44-foot building. And probability is probably that nobody's going to do that. But in the paper, that's the potential.
And I came a long way, I came from 50 to 35. So I, I was, I worked it through with Mr. Walter and something that we can both live with.
So you're talking about side?
Side.
On that commercial lot in the VC?
Yep.
Where the buts are residential.
Yeah.
Where the buts, some, you know, either industrial property or something, it's not an issue. It's just where the buts residential.
No. You want the new code?
Yes.
Watch on that sheet.
The new code, I put it in here. This is the current one.
Right.
That is, it's now there. And I want to amend that from 10 feet to 35.
So the...
Normally setback in the backyard is 35, but...
Yeah.
You're putting it on the side based upon commercial residential.
And this would be something that is, okay, that's based into a residential district. That's the key, I think. Because we, if we had a mixed use, we had new condos next to a shopping plaza or whatever we have now, that's not going to come into play because that's not a residential district. Is that right?
Right.
What, what about the Johnny's buildings? I mean, they, if we were to change, what's the setback on those?
I don't think it's 35.
Okay, but did it just be a, an existing non-conforming use? If it were changed.
Well, I think it's not, I expect you to wonder, Bobby, you're telling me that it's really not conforming now, isn't it?
I don't believe so. It's, I, I don't, I don't believe so, I'd have to look and see, I don't know.
We're discussing here.
I didn't discuss that.
If, but under this new scenario, whatever would be there would have to, or somebody would have to get a variance, if they wanted to use, you know, they'd become, get a variance from 35 feet to 20 feet or whatever. I would guess right now it's pretty about 20 or 25 feet. That's one of the areas.
From the house, from the, on the, from the...
It's, it's about as big as the water that the driver, maybe 15 foot, isn't it?
It's not that wide.
Yeah.
I, my guess is 40 feet. Well, yeah, I'm more, I'm not, back there, it's not a lot of wood.
What's the reference to, I'm sorry, what's the reference to 16-8? 16 is a green belt. It says 15-7 and 16-8.
Oh, I think once you did have green belt in there, took that out.
I took that out.
Okay, so it's...
Oh, didn't change, we didn't change it, you didn't change it.
Yeah, I didn't change the number, but we took the, the green belt out because we didn't want it to be part of that.
So it should be section 15.7 zoning code.
Zone code, yeah, there we go.
All right.
All right, is everybody clear on that?
I'm clear as long as it's a residential district and not, you know, it doesn't affect the mixed use.
Yes. That's highly concerned. Okay, and the process for this is council...
Do they, do a, what, what do they formally do to...
Well, what it, what it says in section 22.7 of the code now talks about how to amend this. It could be initiated three ways. One is by planning commission, one is by application of a, of an owner, and the third is by council. Council initiates a text amendment by passing an ordinance initiating that. So it's, you would have to pass an ordinance that would then get certified to planning commission and then the normal process would happen. Planning commission would hold its public hearing, it would make a recommendation to council, council holds its public hearing. But the first step for council to initiate a text amendment is to pass an ordinance with your proposed text amendment. It's the essence, it's like a property owner who would file an application. That's, it's the equivalent of how council files the application.
Do you have the ordinance for next council need?
Ordinance need, yeah.
And I can draft that if you forward on to me the exact section and language that's being proposed. All right.
And Mr. Walter, just going back to our meeting, the reason that we took out the green belt is because the green belt doesn't get affected by anything whatsoever. It's protected by the charter.
Well, I read that we're concerned about, you know, this 44-foot belly next to a green belt.
Yeah.
And, you know, we discussed it and decided that, you know, that's probably not a factor. There's no way of living back there, there's no way of building a house back there.
It just doesn't get touched. It doesn't affect any, in any way.
So we dropped that part, too.
Okay.
We understand that, you know, the likelihood of this happening, as well, after we do the investment plan, like, maybe we'll increase the chance of that happening. But, you know, as long as there's a chance of it happening, you know, when they have to struggle with figuring out how we can stop somebody from doing that at the time where they came, that's all.
Okay. Next item.
And actually, I think on that one, rather than laws and rules that we were going to have, inviting Mr. Forbes to be here, we wanted to have a general discussion about green belt issues.
Yes, please.
So, how do we want to start that? Well, I guess we're, the reason it came to life is we were supposed to put shed in the green belt. And here, the planning commission did not have the authority to, or nor his BCA because, wow, nothing's permitted in the green belt, so...
Except those five.
Not the permitted races.
Little, another little stinger on this, I just found out today, somebody told me, or I didn't find out, someone told me today, let's put it that way, that an individual told these, the people we're talking about with the lot, with the space we're talking about, that put on a skid and it probably would be okay.
What, what, what?
Well, we're, you know, I think we're beyond talking about one particular item. This is, I think, a general discussion about green belt regulations.
This is educational, so we have a clear understanding of green belt.
Yeah, I think it's kind of a little...
Well, I thought we were going to be specific because it's an annoying issue.
It's not an issue, really. There's nothing that we can do anything about.
Okay, okay, I agree. Except for the slant that's there.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
And I think John is prepared to give us just some general advice on it.
Right, I mean, let's talk about this for a minute just from a very general, in a general way, back into it. You have a charter. Charter says that this council does not have any authority to change the regulations that are in place for green belt districts without submitting that to the electors, basically. If you want to change anything with any of these regulations about green belt, normally council can make any change they want to a zoning code. It's part of your legislative authority. But your charter in this one instance restricts your ability to do that and says, when it comes to green belt, you can't change it. That's why, you might remember as we went through this whole zoning code change process, that we had to have some discussions with, with the folks from Hamilton County Regional Planning to say, oh, as you go through and make changes to the code, don't touch that section because we can't. You've, you've pretty much hit on it already that the green belt district says there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 permitted uses. And that's it. There is a process in place where, for planning commission to review those proposed permitted uses to talk about the location where something, I mean, you can put a playground in green belt, but it would go to planning commission first to review the site selection, where it's going to be. That's a planning commission thing. Let's make a couple of things clear. BCA does not have any authority to grant variances to allow things in green belt that would not otherwise be allowed in green belt. Council does not have the authority to permit something in a green belt that's not otherwise already permitted in a green belt. But if you look at the things that are permitted in the green belt, most of them are pretty simple and there really are no other regulations for it. There is one provision that's for permitted use that's called allotment gardens. And allotment garden is an old, old-fashioned name for what we now call community gardens. So your green belt districts allow community gardens. You also have another section in your zoning code that governs community gardens. And in fact, it says, community gardens are allowed in every district, which is consistent with this. So you can't have community gardens in green belt. That's one of the, that may be the only action, the only permitted use that actually has a whole chapter or section in the zoning code to regulate how those work.
You know, it's kind of interesting because I almost feel, and I know this is water over the dam, but the rub comes in letting people own green belts. Because if people didn't own green belt, it's, it's a strange concept of having property and you can do something with one part of it, but you can't do something with the other.
That's actually, I don't have that, I don't think I'll be able to put my hand on that section, but there actually is a section in the zoning code that talks about parcels that have split zoning. And if I'm remembering, it would take me too long to find it. But I think it may even address that if part of it is green belt, that, then that part is governed by a green belt district.
Sure, I mean, it makes sense.
So it's, I don't know how common it is in reality. But, but you see provisions like that in codes all the time. That if, if a parcel for whatever reason happens to be split by two different zoning districts, then you pretty much have to find where the line is and you can do this on that side and this on that side.
But for, for a wooded green belt lot, which most of them are, you can't cut the trees down, I don't think. So, I mean, how are you going to put in a playground or a garden or anything else if you've got 30 trees covered?
You can get a permit from the manager to clear some of it.
Green belt?
Yeah, yeah, there's...
I wasn't aware of that.
Why not, not to clear trees, just for some specific things, for tree row section. Yeah, the undergrowth, dead trees, things like that.
Well, we, we don't have the authority and I understand that. And I think there's really sound reason for it, it's built in that way. But at some point, we still have a responsibility to enforce. Somebody's got to have the responsibility to enforce the code and you just, you know, some bad board without, I mean, I don't know how and when that's dealt with. Because if, if we don't do it, why wouldn't, and I'm looking at my neighbor doing whatever they want to do, why wouldn't I do what I want with my rebuilt space?
I mean, I agree. I don't, I don't know what, are we supposed to talk about this right now or not? Start about joy wood.
It is a working, yeah.
Okay. I mean, do you, you know about joy wood and I guess they poured that concrete pad in.
It's wet, I know.
Yeah. I mean, it, like you were saying, it, mill crack was taken out and that went into that area. And normally when people replace dry roof or something, they don't, could have prevented. And it was a pre-existing condition which they actually made it nicer and probably a bigger. They're, they're new homeowners that, they weren't the ones who previously had done the end of work. So it...
Well, what, what I would say without knowing all the specifics, but the concept of, of like a non-conforming use, something that was in existence prior to a zoning regulation, and we've talked about this before, that if you're doing something that's permitted and then the code changes and it's no longer permitted, you can keep doing it.
Right.
And in fact, many codes also have some provision that says, that's what's called a legal non-conforming use. Many codes have provisions that say, and if you have a legal non-conforming use, you're allowed to maintain it and you're allowed to fix it, but you can't, if it, if it goes away, you can't replace it.
It's the dead chicken scenario, we're talking about chickens. You can have it as long as, until they die.
But in this case, I, I mean, this, the green belt provisions have been part of the code since there was, as far as I can tell, since there was a zoning code. The very first version of the zoning code had these very green belt regulations. So I don't know what was there before, but I suspect that it would not have been a legal non-conforming use because it probably shouldn't have been there in the first place.
In the first place.
Oh, yeah, for sure. So, that being said, if there's something there now, from a technical reading, it's in violation, but then it becomes an enforcement action just like everything else in, in your code. Is, when people are in violation of any provision of your zoning code, it's an enforcement action.
So did the NIC go out there?
Um, they're, that's, they're not zoning, we internally are zoning.
So did our zoning aid go out there?
Um, yes.
Okay. Did they receive a violation?
No, not yet.
Okay.
That, that just got poured between, when they submitted the application for the shed and then someone went out to take a look at it, that's when we discovered it had been poured. And we had previously told them, I think on four different occasions, that that could not occur.
Okay. Well, that's, it sounds like this is an administrative matter and it's in your court.
It's not, wait.
Okay.
Yeah, so do with what you must. Ferragut Road Improvement?
Okay, um, yes, we do have the money for that. I confirm that. Um, we might make a change, I'm not sure, we'll proceed with the Sammy code. Given the dollar amount, if we get out on the side and encounter any additional problems that would take it over $50,000, that would present a problem for us in terms of competitive bid. The serious work that needs to be done on there is the stretch along the curves that, where the breakup is. So the engineer feels that if we do additional, like, depth repair on all of those and coat it with a thicker layer of asphalt, that would serve as, well, as well. And save us about $13,000.
So how does that figure with the bids you've already gotten?
Um, well, the Sammy was actually bid separately, so we would simply be eliminating the Sammy bid from it. And I believe the low bidder in that case would be Mount Pleasant.
How many bids did you have?
Three.
And...
Um, actually four, one didn't include a Sammy.
Okay. And what kind of range were they, that wide?
Um, as low as 24.8 and as high as 68.
What's, yeah, what's that amount?
No, actually he didn't include the Sammy, so that would be, Queen City Laptop would be the lowest.
Something's wrong.
These amounts seem to get subtracted from these, these amounts include that. But yeah, since they didn't include it, that's still in the...
That's still, hang on. Yeah.
You got four bidders?
Mm-hmm.
Three were all at one price and one guy came in way low?
Um, no, not really. The three, like, this one would have been about 20, that would have been about 40, you know. Yeah, I mean...
And that one would be 37 and that one would be 41. And a guy at 24, that's, that turns a big red flag, something.
We had to make sure he had everything in there, or I thought I...
I mean, it's a legitimate company as far as I know.
Who, Mount Pleasant?
No.
Queen City Laptop.
Well, we don't have to take a low bid either, do we?
Well, let me have the, let me have the engineer, yes, we do. Let me have the engineer evaluated to make sure there was, because they didn't include a Sammy and might have been something else they didn't include too, so. I thought, I remember him saying Mount Pleasant without the Sammy would be a little better.
Well, I mean, that one may not be responsive to the bid, that's another, responsive to the, the bid.
Yeah, but it could be a lot of these or something.
Just for my own education, because I know that when we looked at low bid for having brass cut and we were having issues with not getting cut, there was talk of possibly changing that next time around. So what is the guideline for low bid? We take it no matter what, even if their reputation is not strong?
You have to be able to document pretty significantly any deficiencies that person has or fresh now as to why they should...
Yeah, the standard, the standard is that you have to take the lowest and the best bid. And it's that and best part that gives you...
Flexibility.
A little bit of flexibility. But for you to, for you to make a determination that, say, the, the number two bid is actually the lowest and best bid, well, they're not the lowest, they're the lowest and best, you've got to be able to articulate.
And is that something people typically, you know, groups avoid because of minimal pitfall in doing that?
It rarely happens, yeah. It rarely happens that you don't take the, the lowest bid because generally speaking, most bidders that submit a bid are qualified. If, if we, if we write the correct specifications and they meet those, the minimum of those specifications, we should be satisfied with the lowest.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's what's, what happens in business, all business, I'm sure. And this is the way I have it, mine, I'm sure it happens all over. Is if, if somebody thinks they find a loophole and they make their bid based on this loophole they think they've found, for lack of a better term, and then they go back and point it out after they get the scientific, they say, well, you know, what about this? Do you want us to do this? Well, of course we want you to do that. It's, well, that wasn't in your document, it wasn't here. So here's a change order, change orders are where you pay for it.
Well, you had mentioned that about the tree.
Yeah.
The specifications went also, all, all the same, specifications went the same.
They just check, make sure that the bid documents are okay and that the work, scope, the work is all okay.
There might be other issues. I'll have to get the engineers' comment on that, if I can, in a conference.
I was going to say, there's asterisks on the slide that, and, and that's just referring to the same code. Now, I find out, I mean, if that's the case, amen, that's a great price, go for it.
You know, $20,000, $30,000 stake in a small company can put them under, then would you...
Hey, I, I just want to ask for a performance bond now.
I just get it anyway.
We'd get it anyway. Okay, anything else, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Walter?
Just wanted to show you the 75th anniversary hats. Oh, my God. Looking at, trying a couple of different colors.
These are all available now, Jeff, or you're making decisions about colors?
No, we're just making a decision. I just thought I'd show you guys. The nice thing about these, uh, the cost is pretty reasonable and I can order as one versus 200. And what I'm, what I'm running up, or 200, what I'm running up against right now are some people are showing up with old shirt order forms on the website. We have it marked what's left. And we're starting to have this dilemma, like, I want these two shirts that are no longer stock and they charge ridiculous amount of money for me to get two shirts. So, I mean, they're working with me and that, that's good. So the nice thing is we can buy one or whatever. And I just offer the Harvest Festival, if we get 30 or 40, I can always reorder if we need to.
Which color are you going to have?
This is my preference, but...
Do you have a rate?
Why don't you, why don't you, why don't you keep it flexible? Because, you know, that really comes down to, they all feel pretty good, don't you think?
No, I think this is the best one.
You look pretty gorgeous.
I'm designed and paired, I like them all.
I tell you what, I, I went to a trade show when we were traveling in New York and this is the Carhartt look and more of a farmer, so that's okay. So...
And this is what?
That's the, my second favorite, that...
Greg's your second favorite?
And that's a what look? That's a what look?
That is...
You said it's a Carhartt, farmer, what's this?
Mustaches. It's a Greg.
That's a hot day look, so if it's hot, that won't absorb as much heat.
All right, so I can keep this then?
For a price, you can keep that.
What is, what is the cost going to be?
The cost is $8 each and I'm thinking...
The retail, I see the retail.
No, the wholesale price is eight, I'm thinking...
What, what are you going to sell them?
I think $12, you know.
It's still a great price.
Yeah, it is. It's a great price.
My bagels are... Before, after, yeah.
But I'm learning the hard way as we get down to the tail end of 75th event, so maybe I should have not gone for the break even approach to... But even if we sold the edge glass and everything for a couple more bucks, I'm not sure we'd have that. But I think Harvest Festival, this goes well with it. We also have some beer mugs that have the 75th logo on it and...
Are you going to sell those signs? The, you know, when they took off the...
Yeah, I'm planning on putting on eBay or similar, the...
We'll put one in my car first, I'll use the money.
It's nice, I can tell people that there's already interest and I've got one sold for $5,000.
15 would make, make it change.
Put down on the poles?
Yeah. I'll find 15.
To the 75th. I just, I want to, I want to give those.
Okay. How many of them are there?
How many of the signs? How many of the signs?
Yeah.
There's fourteen total. I'd like the Village Entertainment at least one, so I'd say there's thirteen for sale. And one, one thing that did happen is, uh, they had recently coated the poles, and so a couple of them they had to cut off, and Mike did a good job of cutting along the bottom, so I have to take those and have those re-some and trim, uh, and, but they should. Well, they, so.
So they're finished?
Well, a couple of them they had to cut at the top as well.
I mean.
Because if someone wants to hang them.
Yeah, well.
Because I deliver a good product that you can just write on.
That's why, I mean, you know, if, if you wanted to, like, if you're gonna auction them off, they. We should consider donating one of the.
Yeah, I mean, I could call out this one, it's cut, but somebody would have to cut it, and it's not a big deal.
Don't you think that you should?
We should donate one of those struggles.
And so.
Twelve.
Perfect.
Twelve.
Yeah, twelve. Twelve available for sale?
No, eleven. I already planned one a long time ago.
All right, well, good luck with the bid.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, is there any other business? If there is not, I believe there is a motion.
I move to adjourn from the council work session September seventh, two thousand and thirty. And move in. Let's make our two separate motions.
All right.
Wait, wait, we have to.
We are here, we should start to.
Executive session. We just need a motion.
We don't adjourn.
Don't adjourn from this.
No, you don't want to adjourn from this. We just need to adjourn to executive session, period, story, that ain't happening.
It's all part of the session. It's all part of the work session.
All work sessions. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters pending litigation.
Is there a second?
Should we correct this agenda, this different, this special?
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any need for any discussion. Clerk call the roll.
Adams?
Aye.
Treese?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Treese?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Wolterman?
Aye.
All right, there won't be any action, because this is. And we'll adjourn from the work session to be, we want adjournment from the executive session.